Okay. Joining us for the monthly meeting is the Public Air Control Board. I have to create patience. One minute, second.
Oh, you can't hear. Speak, can you speak up a little bit?
Can you hear me now?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's keep going. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing. This public hearing held by the Little Metro Air Protection Board. All the orders being held pursuant to KRS chapter seventy-seven of district regulations. Noted to this hearing and has been published pursuant to state law. This public hearing is being held via video teleconference. Restrictions on making written and oral statements via video teleconference have been distributed. Oral statements must be presented today. Statements should be in science and all statements will become part of the hearing record. This is proposed amendments to district regulation two point one six to be reviewed today. Please staff please present proposed amendments to district regulation two point one six. Mr. Sullivan.
Hi, morning. Hi, good morning. Good morning, everybody. If you all remember, in October, the board approved a motion to open the public comment period for revisions to regulation two point one six, that's Title V operating permits. We did not receive any comments during that time period. And so this revision, which removes the affirmative emergency affirmative defense provisions from the regulation, remains required at this time by a twenty twenty-three EPA final rule. So absent any questions or comments today, I would recommend that the revisions to the regulation be approved by the board at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, has any member of the public registered to make a statement?
No.
Any member of the public submitted a written statement?
No.
Are there any members of the public in the edits room that wish to make a statement in self-research approach? Are there any members of the public that would like to make a brief comment on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand. Do you have video teleconference? You can call upon, so if you're to find on the participants list, pressing star three, joining by phone. Take your
I do see one raised hand, Chairman Sullivan.
Okay.
The left.
Please, put them on.
Guys, I can't hear anything.
Can you hear now?
It's really low. We can hear you, but you sound like you're distant.
Let's try to fix that. It's the limits.
Mr. Bertalan, you have actually been added. I will unmute your phone. You had to raise hand for a question.
Oh, that was what I had my hand raised for because I couldn't hear anything and couldn't say anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good now, Andy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So everybody can hear. We have any
Is it better? I fixed it. Is it better?
Is that better?
Yes, great. Yes, definitely better. Thank you. Okay.
Do we need to back up and repeat anything?
We can barely hear the chair. We hear everyone else very clear. Chairman, you're very low. I'm not sure if you're away, but we can barely hear you.
You can try moving this small microphone on the table in front of the desk closer to Chairman Sullivan, and that should hopefully give him a little more.
Is that any better? Wow. That's a little bit next to the two-minute microphone. Yeah. Hyperphone Is that any better?
It's still hasn't picked up a lot. I wonder if we are getting the proper one on
I do not know, but it's literally twelve inches from me.
Yes, I can see you.
Much better now. Yeah, it's much better now.
So we're better? Okay, good deal.
If Andy will please promote Board Member Bertalan to the panel, that would be great.
I think we got the second. Say that again. Okay, so let's, Ms. Sullivan, would you repeat?
Sure.
Your presentation.
That's just a practice. So if you all remember, in October, the board approved a motion to open the public comment period for revisions to regulation two point one six, Title V operating permits. We did not receive any comments during that time. This revision, which removes the emergency affirmative defense provisions from the regulation, remains required by a twenty twenty-three EPA final rule. Absent any questions or comments today, I would recommend that the revisions to regulation two point one six be approved by the board at this time.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
You did well the second time.
Thank you.
As well as the first time. So I'm gonna go ahead and ask again, if anybody on this video teleconference has wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand via video teleconference and you'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find on the participants list or by pressing star three, joining by phone.
I see no raise.
Thank you. Are there any questions by board members? Thank you. This concludes the public hearing. Now call the regular meeting of the Little Air Pollution Control Board to order. We are conducting the monthly media today via video teleconference. I will call, conduct a roll call. Board members that are present on this teleconference, when I call your name, please say here. Jeffrey Coburn.
Here.
Candace Shob White.
Here.
Marissa Neal.
Chairman. Mr. Bartolom, could you turn your camera on? We can proceed. We have a call.
Okay. Marissa, you responded. You're on mute, apparently.
Oh, well, it shouldn't be. Doesn't
No, you're not.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm here. Yeah, that is kind of weird.
Okay, thank you.
It was a long delay.
Charlie Bell. Sajad Jamil. Charlie Bertolone.
I am here.
And again, we would, if possible, if possible, we need to get you on the screen, which we don't see you at the moment.
I'm messing with that right now, Chairman Sullivan. It bought me in as an, as a participant instead of a board member, and something's going on here, so give me a minute.
Okay.
We've elevated him to panelists, so he should be able to turn his camera on down.
Okay, did you hear that?
How are we doing now?
Be able to turn your camera on?
How are we doing now?
Um, I don't see you.
Yeah.
I see your name.
I see my face, but I don't see it in the square, which is crazy.
Yeah, I'm actually not seeing a camera icon next to his name in the participant list. For some reason, it hasn't added the the visual to his account. I can try removing and re-adding again. Let's see, let me do here.
Because right now I'm showing camera on and I see a visual. But as Andy just said, I don't see a video next to my name for an icon.
Yeah. I tried promoting you to co-host to see if that would activate it, but it doesn't look like it has.
Okay, you guys want me to log out and try to come back in?
We have
Yeah, we have a call, Charlie, so I don't know.
If we could leave Mr. Bertolone's box up so that everyone knows that he's in attendance and can easily see that he is here, we'll be able to proceed.
Okay, all right, let's move on then. Underductions, Ms. Hamilton?
None this month.
Okay. Just wait. Public recognitions today.
Not today, but we have been in contact with Art Williams' family and we will be recognizing him in January.
Great, just wait. Approval of minutes with the meeting, minutes of the regular board meeting held on November twentieth, twenty twenty-four were distributed electronically for review. Are there any changes to the minutes by board members? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Moving on to public comment, Ms. Thorne, is anybody registered to make a public comment this morning?
Have not.
Has anyone provided a written comment?
Have not.
Prior to the meeting. Are there any members of the public in the edits room that wish to make a comment? If so, please approach the podium. I've seen none, we'll move on. Are there any members of the public that wish to make a brief statement on this video teleconference? Please raise your hand via video teleconference or you'll be called upon. This is a feature you can find on a participants list or pressing star three and you'll be called upon.
I see no raise.
None, thank you. This completes the port public comment portion of the meeting. There is no unfinished business. And we'll move on to new business. The district has recommended that the board adopt the proposed amendments to district regulation two point one six. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to district, to district regulation two point one six? Still moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion by the board? Okay, I'm gonna take a roll call. Please unmute your mic and say yes if you wish to adopt the proposed amendments to district regulation two point one six and no if you do not. Jeffrey Coburn.
Yes.
Candace Shob White.
Yes.
Marissa Neal.
Yes.
Thank you. Charlie Bell. And Charlie Bertolone has, can vote? No, he can't vote. Well, apparently, because we can't see it as a technicality, so. Yeah, vote yes. To propose amendments to the district regulation two point one six is adopted. Moving right along, there are no committee reports since none met, which brings us to the director's report. Director Hamilton.
Thank you very much, Chairman Sullivan. Good morning, everyone. Let me first congratulate Lauren Robbins in her first regulation revision for the district.
Good job.
Thanks.
Doing that work before, I'm firing fantastic as well. Picking this work up is a bit of a challenge. We speak a different language. We talk in weird words. We have weird rules that have been developed in the region here over sixty years of EPA regulation and even our own history that predates that, so everything is a bit of a archaeological dig to understand why you're doing what you're doing. And then it seemed like a pretty good one to let Lauren start on. There's going to be much more difficult.
I was gonna say they can get harder as we go.
So the first thing we'd like to start with this morning is a report on Anderson Wood for the board. Steve Revett is going to present that. Under APCD regulation one oh seven, which is what Steve's gonna focus on, companies have a general duty to ensure that emissions from the process or process equipment are in compliance with all of the applicable air pollution control regulations. So with that.
If you recall last meeting, Rachel mentioned we met with the community group and talked about Anderson Wood Products and wanted to ask for some additional information about some fires we learned about. That's what I am gonna talk about today. We got reports from the fire department about what happened and had a look at those about whether they'd be required to report. Next slide, Lee, is any? So just a brief overview of Anderson Wood Products. They're a woodworking facility. They take lumber, dry it out, woodwork it down into railings, flooring, other wood products to run the kiln and some other steam at their plant. They operate a boiler that uses the wood waste from their process. That can be dusty. Their main pollutants are the products of combustion from their kiln, from the boiler that kills the kiln and the just general dust from woodworking. Now, a lot of that's big dust, you know, you can imagine sawdust from a woodworking facility, not the fine particulate that we talk about closely. It's, you know, big dust that you can see. They're subject to a FDU permit and they've been around for over a hundred years. Next slide, Andy. All right, the picture on the left is a little small, but I was trying to give an idea of where they're at. They're in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They're kind of right where the red pin is to the east. There's a school on the other side of some houses. There's a kind of a parking lot in front of them between them and the houses, but it's generally residential neighborhood. Surrounded by houses. There's a railroad track that kind of runs right through their property. And the picture on the right is the stack from the boiler that we're talking about. The stack is on the right side of the screen. That's the view from Dumeinell at the railroad tracks looking back. The dust collection system, or it's the taller objects up on the top left of the picture. Next slide, Andy. All right, so when we got the report from the fire department, they kind of said both of them were structured fires. One of them was up on the roof. The other one got into some of the equipment for their dust collection system. Both of them were caused by embers from the boiler getting out of the stack and landing on the roof or in the equipment and starting the fires. Anderson Wood, when they were here last month, talked to us about that they had installed spark arresters on that to prevent it from happening in the future. Next slide, Andy. So this is a general rundown of regulation one oh seven. Regulation one oh seven requires companies that have an event that has the potential to cause excess emissions have to report to us. The definition for excess emissions is anything that exceeds an emission standard, which is not real helpful. I've tried to summarize the emission standard regulation up there, but it's just generally any rule that you have in your apartment. Is it a limit on the amount of pollution, the concentration of a pollution? Do you have to run your controls at all times? So if a company has an event, they have an hour to report to us unless they call nine one one and they get an additional hour. So they have to make a pretty quick determination of whether that event has the potential to cause excess emissions. Some companies know that their event won't likely, but report anyway because they're, you know, they're required to report if the potential exists. We don't normally get them on fires because that's not really the, you know, equipment. That's not the type of operation that we're permitting, so there's not really an emissions danger on that. That was a quick rundown of one oh seven. I'll be happy to ask your questions at the end if you'll have more. They generally have to respond after either five days or fifteen days, whether they had did not have excess emissions or whether they did have excess emissions, quantify those and tell us what they have done to prevent it from happening again. That's kind of the main thrust of this reg is, did you evaluate what happened? Or did you fix it? How are you gonna keep it from happening? Next slide, Andy. So for these Anderson Wood fires, we did look at, you know, whether they should have reported. You know, we didn't see where they would have had any excess emissions or really where they were operating equipment that was causing those emissions, problems with it. There was smoke from the fires, but we didn't see where they would have had to have reported for this because they would not have thought there would be excess emissions. Next slide, Andy. So I kind of blasted through that. Does anybody have any additional questions?
So again, the emissions that they're regulated by APCD are what?
So their emissions from the boiler are like carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, fine particulate. The, from the woodworking, it's the PM from the woodworking. So when they are running those processes, they have emission points that they're required to emit the pollutants out of and control equipment that is in that line to prevent, you know, or to control the emissions somewhat.
Okay.
So these fires didn't occur in those, you know, emission point.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, those, those emissions, because I understand from what you had said, there are some controls on them.
So the boiler has, I think cyclones in the stack. The woodworking equipment has, you know, particular controls, baghouses, I think, on the dust collection system. Goods around the facility collecting the dust. So their permitted operations have controls. These fires, one of them was on the roof, the other one, I think, was in the dust collection system.
Oh, I see. And for, for the boiler, how much are they permitted to emit? Is it based on annual emissions?
I would have to look at each individual on that, but I don't think they bump up against their max. We've not had issues with that, you know, when we got the session. There's a FDU, they have plant-wide caps, they monitor source. But the boiler limits are primarily in pound per million B.
Okay, yeah. Well, so are the emissions monitored then?
They've done testing. I think it's been quite some time since they've tested that boiler. Input of those emissions as well as doing visual surveys of the opacity. So our, our staff has been going out to do visual emission surveys for the boiler as well. So it's a method nine. We're sort of about to do that and going out to try to see, you know, are they meeting those opacity limits for the boiler?
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
I've got, I've got one.
By the way, we can see you now, so whatever you did worked.
Well, when Andy switched me to co-host, apparently that allowed me to activate something that was not working prior to that.
Okay.
So we're good. I, I got a simple question on the actual operations floor. Do they have portable pickup points at the source of dust generation?
So I don't know if they're portable, but they do have dust collection throughout the facility near the sources of the woodworking activities. So because, you know, they're using that to power their boilers, so they're trying to capture as much as possible, get it to their silo so they can use it for their fuel.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You may remember that EPA strengthened the national ambient air quality standard particulate matter in February. They moved that standard from twelve micrograms per cubic meter to nine. Well, that's the first step kicking off the Clean Air Act and lowering the standard. It kickstarts other parts of the Clean Air Act as well. One of the first steps will be upcoming in February of twenty twenty-five, we're just gonna say. And that will be a recommendation from states about an area's attainment status. So best way I can describe it is that Clean Air Act actually starts with, it's essentially a bit of a dance. First, states have to give EPA an assessment of where their data shows they are with attainment. Project where they'll likely be when in a year EPA makes final designated. So at this point, following the twenty twenty-three Canadian wildfires in which our area saw unprecedented particulate matter and ozone impacts, we've been working with our contractor to prepare exceptional event demonstrations for both particulate matter and ozone. Our requirement would have been to go out for public comment on the particulate matter demonstration this month. However, with the kind of conclusion of our twenty twenty-four monitoring year and following a recent consultation with EPA Region Four to discuss the regulatory significance now of that twenty twenty-three data, we will be early certifying our twenty twenty-four particulate matter set in lieu of submitting an exceptional event demonstration of particulate matter and recommending that the area be recognized as attainment based on the twenty-two twenty-four data set. EPA will have a year to evaluate these recommendations and take into account many exceptional event demonstrations that may be filed for in the area. And for us, that does move an exceptional event demonstration that the Indiana Department of Environmental Management has prepared for Park County. So for us, we will make a recommendation to the state in early February following some early certification work by our air monitoring group. And we feel confident that that nine microgram per cubic meter standard, we're gonna meet that and continue meeting. Are there any questions about that?
In the timeframe do they have to respond? Good question.
That's a good question. Generally speaking, what happens is we make an initial designation and by that one-year deadline for them to act, they are able to do so. What we understand, though, following those twenty twenty-three Canadian wildfire event, that throughout the eastern seaboard, there are likely going to be several hundred exceptional event demonstration of particulate matter that EPA will need to assess. They can give themselves a one-year extension. So they've committed to reviewing those as quickly as possible to stay on track. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that they're able to meet that timeframe.
So if they do that, what is the date that they would respond by? Is it literally a year from now?
It'll be a year from February.
So February twenty-sixth.
Right, so we start February twenty-five, they get February twenty-sixth. And again, they'll take into account what happens in our air shed, you know, for the twenty-five air monitoring season where they make their final determination. But for our area, we continue to see, you know, trending lower emissions of particulate. That said, Canada catches on fire again. We may have some work to do additionally with respect to the nine micrograms per cubic meter standard. Things that we have seen in past years may now have regulatory significance that we need to deal with. And in particular, Bill and his group talk more about it if you have questions. Things like Saharan dust storms may prove impactful. Prescribed fires to the south of us, in particular Georgia and Florida, we've seen impacts from those here. Nine's a really low standard, so it'll be interesting work going forward. Any other questions?
I, I guess that means after you review the data, including the revised twenty twenty-two, then the design values that we've seen this month's air quality report, those will change, right?
No?
No, because one of them exceeded.
So four PM. That is the Jeffersonville monitor.
Yeah.
So that is the monitor where US, or I'm sorry, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management has prepared exceptional demonstrations to remove some of that data that is causing that monitor to be over nine point three. And it's the contribution from the Canadian wildfires.
So the design value won't change, but because of the exception.
It will change.
It will change. Okay.
Ours won't change.
It won't by ours, I meant.
Yes. I didn't.
Electmss.
MSA, yeah. Right.
So, yes, that design value, once EPA, you know, reviews those exceptional demonstration and concurs, that allows for that wildfire-influenced data to be removed from the data set. And they are out for public comment on their submit. All right. Moving on, ready?
Yep.
All right. At the same time that we've been working on an exceptional event demonstration for particulate matter, we've also been working on a demonstration for ozone. That's a bit more complex. You'd say that particulate matter, exceptional event demonstrations are straightforward, but compared to ozone, they are. Contractor, APCD, been preparing to go out for public comment at the end of this month. And last Friday, December thirteenth, EPA released a new tool for ozone exceptional events and scheduled a webinar on January fourteenth to present and demonstrate its use. But despite having developed several tools for particulate matter-related exceptional events, this is the first and only tool that EPA has developed for ozone impacts from the twenty twenty-three wildfires. Given this groundbreaking development, we'll be letting EPA know later today that we believe that transparency and good public policy dictate that we understand EPA's expected use of the tool and address that expectation in any resulting analysis, if appropriate, in our draft for public review and comment. Therefore, absent any unforeseen delays, the district and our contractor intend to release the demonstration draft for public comment very quickly following the ember webinar. the demonstration draft for public comment very quickly following the ember webinar.
And that's scheduled for when?
January the fourteenth.
Did you say that? Okay.
You meant it.
I'm sure you did.
Uh, grateful that EPA is developing these tools. Uh, the timing of it is disconcerting. Our exceptional demonstration work of contractor is quite expensive and costly. And with that, I just wanna thank the exceptional work by our air monitoring program. On any normal given day, APCD operates one-fifth of the air monitoring stations on the well. With that, we operate over one-third of the instrumentation. That's just the normal work we do. Given EPA's T six forty adjustments, which had additional work for our group. Work was completed in late summer as necessary, both for particulate matter exceptional event demonstrations and also ozone demonstrations. And new grant opportunities, uh, presented to our air monitoring group, they have been exceptionally busy. They work every day to be sure that the millions of data they generate are good data. They're also required to show their work. Uh, EPA has scheduled a technical systems audit, this is a very comprehensive audit of our air monitoring program for December. Uh, and now they've delayed that into January. There's no real good news there for our staff since we've already provided them with the necessary documentation they requested, and it was extensive. And now we simply have to kind of wait till they're actually here on site. And Billy, that's scheduled for January, I think. So. I just wanna, you know, recognize their work. Also wanna recognize Billy DeWitt, this month is his twenty-second year with the district. And as part of the work that we do, you know, we try to make our work as, uh, transparent as we can. Steve talked earlier about excess emissions and that, especially the, you know, defined thing. And we had a conversation yesterday with, uh, Chairman Sullivan about what is a design value? We talk in a language that makes people nuts. It makes us nuts. Uh, King and I are working on a project, uh, right now where it's a foreign language to us with EPA. We're just frustrated and understand that a lot of this is why people don't like government. To help people better understand our work, Billy, a lot of the global government, our data analyst coordinator have been looking to revise the air quality report. We provide that to you each month. Most air pollution control agencies, while they make their data available, as we do. We get our data in time, we put it on here now, the whole data sets are publicly, publicly available. The air quality report is up month. Everyone else just kind of gives an annual update on their design values. Our board has previously asked for more information. So what we give you is what the design value is defined as. And then extra information than other board members have asked for. We understand that may no longer be helpful to you. And so, we are going to put together some additional, uh, options for the board. We want your feedback. We want the public's feedback about how to make this data easier to understand. So, I ask you all, over the next couple of board meetings, really look at the air quality report and think about as we move forward, how do you want to be involved about where we are, our progress with air quality? So.
And just be certain, we're, we're talking about this document right here.
Which is very mathematically, it's got lots of numbers on it. It's not the, uh, most accessible document in the world. How to share that data and visualize that data in a newer sensible way. Will and Billy and Brian here support.
So, board members have comments. How would you like them submitted to you?
I think what we'll do is go ahead and in the new year, go through for the public and the board what's in the air quality report. What things we think we probably should include. And then get your feedback thereafter, whether that's in a board meeting or email or conversation.
All right.
All right. Lastly, uh, this is our last board meeting of twenty twenty-four. I recall that everyone has been here and we've all been able to meet in person, as well as continue our virtual meetings. We do expect to see some additional final actions by EPA before the end of the year. It's our understanding that today is probably the last day that EPA Administrator Michael Reagan will sign an action. So we may see some additional programs rolled out. We could also see them in January. Uh, we did see that with the Obama administration, but we saw those get rolled back quickly, uh, with the incoming administration and so may not see that same flurry of activity, which candidly, to some extent, I appreciate because it provides a little bit more certainty for regulated entities as well as the public about what's actually on the books and in play. When we learn of changes, and there will be changes, we'll do our best to share information about the potential impacts of those changes as quickly as we can. As part of that administration change, our state and local peer agencies are working through our advocacy organizations. That includes the National Association of Cleaner Agencies and the Association of Air Pollution Control Agencies to introduce ourselves, the work we do, how that work gets done to new leader at EPA. Big fan of the Clean Air Act, it does set up a cooperative federalism strategy where EPA sets a standard. State locals develop those plans. So, some of the things that we've been asking, uh, those advocacy agencies to include in those introductory letters, including all to be sure that we are adequately funded. Our funding from US EPA is an inflation-adjusted amount, it's kind of the goal into nineteen ninety-four. Work's not gotten less complex. Certainly, we've had several really big tears here recently. But we're also looking for a call that EPA help us with our work providing timely implementation guidance and techniques. So, again, we'll have an opportunity to meet you. That we'll see a commitment from the incoming administrator to be sure that they provide for well-qualified leadership at the regional level and that they do so quickly. We have a lot of work to do. We'll need that leadership and place of work to accomplish. So. Are there any questions?
Folks? Not for me. Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, yes.
I wanted to let you know that, um, Anderson Wood Products left a comment in the chat.
Okay.
Can I read it?
Please do.
Um, I did wanna let the board know that Anderson Wood Products was in attendance today online. Uh, apologies that I was not able to be there in person. We'd be happy to address any additional questions and appreciate today's report.
Thank you. All right, the, um, air quality report and the complaint summary and the other reports, um, have been distributed electronically. Are there any questions on any of those documents from the board this morning? Okay, all right. Um, before we adjourn again, if you, we would ask that you please sign in if you so choose, if you haven't. Um, we also wish everybody is safe and happy holiday season and New Year. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting and the next meeting will be January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you. Two short ones.